So I'm Ashley Button-Shawn and this is Make It Public and I have Peggy Upiana with me here today. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, how are you doing today?
I'm doing pretty well. How about you?
I'm doing good.
Good.
So Peggy, tell me, you're running for office. What are you running for?
I am running for Ferneal School Board Director District Five.
Yeah, so what made you want to run?
Um, I don't want to run, to be honest with you, I really don't. But there was nobody else that stepped up to run for this position. And I feel like um, this is a fairly critical year for somebody to at least put up a challenge. And the reason I feel that is because, you know, as you know, um, you know, schools have gone through all kinds of turmoil recently.
Right.
And, and there's some major transitions, particularly in Ferndale, um, you know, with the retirement of the superintendent. And um, you know, the introduction of a couple of mandates that are coming out of Olympia. And um, you know, the budget problems that they've got, which you know, were not really their fault. Um, but you know, uh, yeah, there's just a whole lot going on in Ferndale School District.
So when you say no one else stepped up, is that just no one else stepped up in general or no one else stepped up with the same values that you hold?
Uh, no, nobody stepped up in general. Um, the incumbent who is there, I believe, has been there um, 12 years with a little bit of a break. I mean, you know, but he's been there for quite a long time. Um, another director, Leanne Riddle in District Four, has been there for 16 years. And so, you know, they have that, that, um, they're just entrenched.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and you have, you've had kids, right?
Yeah, we have four kids. Our two oldest went through the Ferndale School District and we homeschooled our two youngest.
Okay.
So, um, I feel like I've got a fairly um, broad view of education options. Um, having, you know, having had kids in local, you know, brick and mortar public school.
Right.
Um, having uh, used online public schools and then having homeschooled. So, you know, I feel like I've had a little bit of sampling, yeah.
Okay, so you talk about the legislation coming out of Washington. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, I mean, honestly, uh, I wish I could. Right now, I know just what I've heard, which is that there are a lot of people that are concerned about, you know, sex education in schools and about um, what has been labeled CRT or Critical Race Theory. And I know those are concerns that are on a lot of people's minds. Um, in addition to that, you know, there's the ongoing concern about how COVID is going to affect things going forward. You know, what the school's response is going to be, you know, whether there are permanent changes, um, you know, whether kids will be able to go back to school without masks, whether they'll have to maintain distancing, you know, all of these things. So, um, those, those are the things that I've just seen people talk about online. Um, and uh, and yeah, those are tough things.
Now, what do you feel that people, I guess that you're seeing online, what do you feel that people feel about, let's say, let's say kids wearing masks, going back to school with masks on? What do, what do parents think about that?
Um, I think a lot of people are not happy with that because they feel like the risk is lower among elementary aged kids. And that there are some potential problems with wearing masks all day long.
Right.
You know, particularly when it's warm out or when, I mean, just, and little kids doing what little kids do, you know? They aren't necessarily going to be good about keeping masks on. They may swap masks.
Oh, they totally swap masks. I've heard many stories. Where did you get that mask? Oh, we traded at school.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, kid behavior is kid behavior. You can't, it's, it's gonna happen, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, I guess, what are some of the things that are important to you? If you could name three things that are important to you that you would go in with in mind, what would those be?
Well, um, primarily, uh, first and foremost, the reason that I am running is because I feel like roughly half of the voters in Ferndale School District are not really represented.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is because, um, if, you know, you recall the recent bond passage and, and then the levy after that. Well, um, you know, when the bond was put through, uh, it failed on the first try. And so they redoubled their efforts and went back and shoved it through the second time without any modifications made to it. And, uh, you know, it, it failed the first time and it barely made it by the second time, which doesn't seem like a mandate to me. That to me seems like, okay, you have a significant minority at least, who really wasn't in favor of this.
Right.
Um, and the attitude was that I saw out there, well, these people don't know. They're just ignorant. They just need to be educated. We need to teach them, as opposed to respecting the opinions of people who differed in opinion. And, and, and I think that's been missing for a long time. It's just a challenge to the way of thinking. Um, I think it's really good to have diversity of thought. In fact, to me, you know, if you want to talk about diversity and inclusiveness, that's the single most important area. And it, 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 you know, it, it puts everything else to pale. I, and yet that seems to be the least accepted, I mean, almost ignored.
Diversity of thought.
It's not true diversity of thought. It's, it's not. It's, um, you know, and, and, and honestly, as a conservative person, which I am, I wouldn't want to live in a world where there wasn't, you know, some, some opposing viewpoint. I think it creates better thinking. I think it makes you better people when you have to listen to other people's opinions and take them into consideration. And maybe look at things from a different perspective.
Right.
And so, you know.
But there's something we said that there is a place for things like, um, in college versus high school or middle school or elementary school.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I agree with that. Um, and, and, and so that kind of brings us to like the, the, the topics of, you know, sex education and Critical Race Theory. Yeah, I do believe that there's age appropriateness that needs to be taken into consideration, which is probably what's got people's buttons pushed more than anything else is this concern that, oh, you know, their kids are going to be exposed to something unwholesome.
Right, right. And something that parents should be teaching.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Not our government.
Not our government, no. I mean, first and foremost, kids are members of their family and their parents are their guardians and their, you know, their protectors. I mean, that, that, they, they belong with their families.
Right.
And I think when you insert yourself between a parent and its child, I think that's a really bad thing to do.
Right, and it seems that the overreach is, is getting further and further down to even now into um, daycares. You know, they want to take over daycare systems.
Take over daycare systems and they want a public school um, funding from, you know, pre-K through the first four years of college. And that's just, I mean.
It's a lot of control.
It is a lot of control. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of resources. It's a lot, it's just, you know.
Right.
And I think it honestly infantilizes people, you know? Human beings take a long time to raise their young to adulthood anyway. And I think when you, you know, make this all, you know, we're gonna take care of you from here to here, I think it kind of encourages that.
Yeah, and in our state, we have no, no choice on education as far as the money following the child. And so it's disappointing to see, you know, I guess, it doesn't really feel like the government cares about the kids. And they don't really care about educating them on the fundamentals.
Well, and honestly, I think, you know, the single biggest reason for the existence of public schools should be to guarantee that all people are literate. I mean, it's a really maybe humble goal, maybe it's, maybe it's a low bar to set. But I don't know that we're meeting that bar and that really should be the focus. You know, everything else is icing on the cake.
Right.
But, you know, providing people with the tools to be able to read and write and understand what they're reading, you know, and to do basic math, you know? Enough to get by in life, you know, to, to balance your checkbook or, you know, manage your accounts. That's, that's what you need, life skills, yeah.
Right, right. Do you, do you feel like in Ferndale, since that's what you're running for, I mean, what's the graduation rate uh, in Ferndale? Do you know?
The graduation rate, I think, is like 88%.
Okay.
Which I don't think is, you know, abysmal, but I think it's better else, yeah, yeah.
So what?
Oh, that's the attendance rate, graduation rate. Um, trying to remember, but I think it was up in the, in the, you know, 80%.
Do you know, has it gone down with COVID?
Has it gone down with COVID? I think it has probably, I don't know. I honestly don't know. And I don't even know that you could get the information from OSPI because um, I know some of their data hasn't been, um, you know, put out there because they don't feel like it's reliable, you know? I can appreciate, well, I don't know. I mean, you know, honestly, it could be difficult because I think keeping track of people um, during this time might
Right.
might be difficult.
Right. Um. So, wait, let me ask you a question. Um, with COVID and the changes that are coming, is there anything that you see that you would like to see, I guess, maybe a transition into, okay, this is what we used to do, we could do this and learn from COVID?
One thing that I haven't seen anybody else ever mention, and I keep bringing it up and nobody seems to nibble on it, maybe I'm crazy, um, is that, okay, I think COVID gave us kind of a slap in the face about disaster preparedness in general. And for, you know, the continuity of the delivery of education. Um, before COVID, I don't think there was any plan in place, you know, obviously
Right.
for a disaster of this kind. Um, but there's still other disasters out there that are, that are at least equally likely. Okay, so for example, you know, for decades, they've been telling us that we're gonna have this big earthquake on the West Coast, you know, get ready for the big one. What is the school's plan should that happen?
Right, well, and what if it's a big one? And then what if Baker blows? I mean, what if they sign, you know what I mean?
What if, okay, so what if this happens? What if, um, in addition to uh, not being able to attend schools because, you know, of infrastructure problems? What if in addition to that, our communication lines are down, you know, our ability, the, you know, internet connections are down?
Right, so you have no Zoom.
Yeah, so there, you know, what's the backup plan?
I wouldn't complain if there was no Zoom.
Well, I know, I know.
But yeah, what is, what is the plan?
Is there any plan at all? Has anybody ever even thought about that?
Yeah.
You know, what if other places done, like say, for example, California after the Northridge earthquake?
Right.
What was the landscape then? How did they deal with the disruption to school services there?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, these are things that I don't know if anybody's ever addressed and I think it'd be prudent to at least maybe give it a little bit of thought.
Right.
Um, you know, after the attacks on nine 11, you know? We didn't know immediately whether there was going to be an assault on our homeland beyond what we saw, you know, in New York. And, um, it could happen again. I mean, I think we'd be naive to think that, you know, we were absolutely, you know, untouchable and that, that it could never happen. So what happens? I mean, I realize that's a huge thing.
Well, no, because you, I mean, you see, for instance, we have COVID and right before COVID, you had a scenario that was run if there was a pandemic. And I think it was even a COVID scenario. And it was run by companies, it was, I mean, by all the big players. And so they're running scenarios on what if we have this, what if we have that? So shouldn't the schools also be ready? I, I would agree with you.
Oh, yeah, and I just, I just never seen anything out there. Maybe this was actually done and I'm just unaware of it. As I said, I'm really in a learning process. So, you know, if any numbers I put out or anything I say is false, I'll gladly, you know, back away and correct it if someone wants to call me on it. But, you know, these are just the thoughts that go through my mind when I look at, you know, operations of, you know, the school district. Um, just things like that.
Yeah.
Um, it also kind of surprised me, honestly, that there was such a panicked response because um, with our two younger uh, boys, as I said, you know, we homeschool, but before we went to the homeschooling route, we actually had put them in online public schooling, um, to begin with, through Washington Virtual Academy
Okay.
um, in Silicon. And I was really surprised, um, they'd been up and running, I think, for like about five years before we ever, you know, got on board with them. But they had worked the kinks out. And our experience with online schooling through them was, at least during the elementary and middle school years, really smooth. The continuity was there. They had teachers that, you know, um, they had for more than one grade and, you know? It was a really good experience, I have to say.
Yeah, and it's growing. There's K-12 connections. There's a lot of online public schools that are growing.
So I was really surprised that, um, that there was such a difficulty of transitioning from where we were, you know, to providing the online schooling.
Right.
And it seemed like they were trying to reinvent the wheel. They were trying to do everything all over again when they already had, you know, templates for how to do things that were, that, that, you know, had had the bugs already worked out.
Right, and you know, I, I'm a mom of four and I had kids that were all in the Linden public school system when COVID hit. And pretty much immediately when I saw the, how they were dealing with it from the high school to the middle school to the elementary school. And, and nothing against the teachers or the principals or, or, or anything personally, but it was a big fat fail. Like if I was grading them, it failed. And, and, and especially if I hadn't been, as a parent, been able to be at home with my kids and teaching them. And so I do think as a, on a state level, on a local level, on every level, we, it was not handled at the best. Um, you know, wasn't done correctly. But I think now we've learned and seen uh, all the different options out there.
Uh-huh.
So I would hope that maybe coming out of this, there would be more options for families and parents. Because I know Linden Academy where my son was enrolled and now all of my kids are enrolled, it's kind of a homeschool co-op program.
Mm-hmm.
Their attendance is through the roof. I think it's over double.
Oh, really? That's, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Now, I know that Ferndale has lost some kids. I mean, you know, largely because of the pandemic thing. I think people either don't want to put their kids back in because they don't want them in an environment where they could catch something.
Yeah.
Or, you know, they've discovered that, hey, homeschooling isn't so bad after all and, you know, we actually kind of enjoy it. I mean, that's kind of what happened to us.
Yeah.
We discovered it's kind of fun, actually, working with your kids and learning right alongside of them and, you know.
It's not as scary as you think it is.
It's not as scary as you think it is. And, and then certainly, you know, you shouldn't let your schooling interfere with your education. And this gave us a lot more time to explore things that were interesting.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I, 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 if I had it to do over again, I probably would have done it sooner, but I didn't realize. I've, you know, I think I have been probably shot myself in the foot in some ways as far as, you know, running for this position. Because I have a history in Ferndale of, you know, of being a voice of no when it comes to issues like the levy and the bond and, you know? But.
But you feel you represent the people.
I feel like, I think that's kind of, it, 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 it isn't that I don't like public schools. I think they do serve a purpose. I think they're one option in an array of choices that really does need to be maintained.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm not for the abolition of public schools by any means.
Right.
Um, and certainly, you know, we've had, um, my kids have had teachers that were great.
Right.
You know, and so I can't, you know, pan them, it's, but it also is limiting. If this is all you've got to choose from, then you really are kind of tied. And, and, and we've had circumstances in our family where it just wasn't working for us. It, it couldn't work. We tried. We tried working within the constraints that, you know, that were there, and it just wasn't doable.
Right. And I think for me, I mean, I've enjoyed homeschooling my kids a lot. But the biggest thing for me is when I realized what they were being taught and what was being put in textbooks. It bothered me. And these are like new textbooks.
Oh, I know.
And, and I, and it's only going to get worse.
So here, I would like to mention something too on that, Ashley. One of the surprising things I found out, because, you know, it's easy to sit back and criticize.
Mm-hmm.
Easier to do that than to jump in there and try and, you know, roll up your sleeves and help yourself.
Right.
And so I had started reading about the responsibilities of school boards and, you know, what not to do. You know, what, what to do to not be a bad school board member. And I found it's a very cooperative, you know, little group. I mean, basically, you have to come to agreement with everybody sitting there and you can't be a, uh, you know, kind of lone crusader for a cause or anything like that. You really do have to just focus like a laser on what's in the best interest of kids.
Right.
The problem is that, um, at least as the school board in Ferndale is set up, they don't review curriculum. That's left up to the administrators. Um, they don't micromanage. The, the attitude is, and I don't know if this is true of all school boards, but certainly as of, you know, the few that I've looked at, is that the school board, you know, reviews the budgets. And, you know, that's, that's where the control lies. Um, administrative decisions are made by the superintendent. And that's the go-between, the connection between the school board and the school. And they don't like to micromanage. And I can understand that. It's like you hire a professional who, you know, you're supposed to trust to do these things and do them the way you want. And that person is in charge of the administrative aspects of the school. And that includes, you know, curriculum decisions.
That's interesting.
Within, within the scope that's even um, allowed to a superintendent. I mean, you know, OSPI dictates most of what.
Right.
You know, uh, they, they set the standards.
Right.
Um.
Because I would say, from someone who has written a letter to a superintendent and a principal, sometimes the superintendent and the principal have no idea what the teacher is teaching.
Well, that's true. See, that's the other, that's the other aspect of it, is actually, the people with the most control over this are the parents. And it's not the people who are elected to sit on the school board. And the reason is, is because as a parent, you have every right to go and sit in, in your child's classroom and see what's going on, see what they're being taught, you know, see how the classroom is run. Um, that's not a guarantee either because, you know, you can't be there every single school day watching what goes on in the classroom. But, you know, you might be able to get some idea by looking at the materials, talking to your kid and occasionally dropping in. And that's really, I think, where the most power lies actually is in, in the parents. Um, I mean, other, other community members also have the option to go sit in on classes. Um, you know, it's a little, feels a little awkward. And I've been thinking about doing it, but it's just, you know, I don't have kids in the system and so.
Yeah, and you don't know if they're going to change what they're doing because they have a visitor.
You know, and just because they have a curriculum does not necessarily mean this teacher's going to stick to that. There's a certain amount of, you know, autonomy that teachers have in their own classrooms. And that's a double-edged sword.
Yes.
You know, because then you get teachers that, you know, can introduce some creative and wonderful things. But then you also have the possibility of some not so wonderful things, so.
Well, and I think, and sometimes teachers do things and they come by it honestly. I know my son had a teacher who brought her ballot to class, and it was a government class to show the kids, but she'd already voted and she showed them how she voted. And, um, not appropriate. And I don't even, I don't, I don't think they're allowed to because they're not allowed to talk about how they vote. They're not allowed to push their views on the students. And so whether she did it on purpose or not, I'm not going to make that judgment, but it was not right. And, but as a parent, I had to voice that concern. Again, I'm not attacking the teacher. Maybe the teacher didn't know, but the principal needs to know. And, and that wasn't, I mean, even at Linden Academy where it's definitely more of a conservative, it's Linden. Linden Academy is more conservative because of all the homeschoolers. Uh, there's been a few things, like my son had to do a, it's like a current world problems class.
Mm-hmm.
And every issue seemed to be about Black Lives Matter or, um, you know, riots. Or it was how Trump was mean to Hispanics. Or it was like, just one thing after another swayed in one direction.
One direction, yeah.
And so, uh, I, I raised concern and the principal was quite mortified and, and she was even surprised because she said, I'm not sure that, she's like, I don't even think the teacher agrees with this. Turns out the teacher kind of thrown in the position because the previous teacher had just had a baby. And she was just pulling from one source that she thought was the source she was supposed to pull from. So, an innocent mistake. But had, had I not said anything, then who knows how long it had gone on. And so I actually found out that we could find our own sources of news and do whatever we wanted, uh, which is great. But I would never have known if I hadn't come with a concern, level-headed. I would recommend, don't come in hot, you know, guns blazing and, and upset because you're not going to get anywhere. But it is important as parents to raise concerns because we do need to turn our tiny little humans into grown adults. And we do need to protect them. So, yeah, I think, I think it's important. But it's an interesting, interesting point that you make that the school board is not, you know, responsible of curriculum. Because I don't, I don't know that people know that, you know, they think anytime there's a problem, I'm gonna go to the school board, I'm gonna yell at the school board.
Yeah, well, and honestly, I mean, my perception before, you know, reading the things that I've read. Um, and maybe this is just specific to Ferndale schools. I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think so, though. Um, uh.
It's probably common in Washington.
I think it's common in Washington. My, so I guess for some reason or other, somewhere in my mind, I had it set that, you know, the school board reviewed the materials that went into the classroom and that they looked at this and that. I don't know that they do. As I said, I think that's a, a function of the administration.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Uh, uh, I wonder if a school board member had concerns, they might raise them.
Might raise them, yeah. Uh, yeah, uh, but the, the channels that you would address that through, I would think, would be first to talk to the teacher. Then if that didn't get you anywhere, go to the principal. If that didn't get you anywhere, go to the superintendent.
Right.
And if that proved unresponsive, then go to the school board and say, hey, I don't think the superintendent is, you know, doing a great job. I think that would be the order that you would go with, but, you know.
But it'd be nice to know that we have people sitting on the school boards who are looking out for our children.
Yeah, and you know, honestly, I think, truthfully, I don't think the people who are sitting on Ferndale School Board, for example, are not looking out for the children. I think they think they are.
Yeah.
I think different people have different views of what is appropriate and what isn't. And, um, yeah.
Well, let's talk about appropriate and what's not. I mean, let's talk about the Sex Education Bill and the book that was read to students in first grade in Bellingham.
Yeah, that really, um, set me back because I'm thinking, that seems to me, to me, I didn't like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, you know, there are parents I'm sure who would disagree with me on that. But at the same time, I don't know that the families got a heads up that that was going to happen. And I think that's the big thing, you know? They say you can opt your kids out, but you can't if you don't know that this is gonna happen, so, you know.
Right, and then, so my kids have brought up, you know, that when you take your sex education class in fifth grade, it's about puberty and body changing and everything. This is not the same thing. This is about sex.
Yeah.
And it's different. And, and it goes into way more detail than children need. In Bellingham, the, the teacher that read this book to first graders, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, but it was about transgender sex, wasn't it?
Well, it was about a boy with a girl's brain.
Okay.
And that was the, I mean, I don't know that it got into, you know, sex as such, but it was, you know.
I haven't read the book.
I haven't read the book either. And I, you know.
But there was quite the outrage and it made national news.
Yeah.
Yes. And, and then the school board member who owns a, a, an adult sex shop, or she calls it an all-age, all-ages sex shop. Which I'm not sure.
I guess that even.
Um, she condones this. So I know, um, you know, there's a conservative running against her, which is great. Um, but I don't think we should be condoning, if, if we're introducing the uh, sexual choices that adults have to our children, we're opening up this box, Pandora's box of, of curiosity. And kids aren't thinking about this until you shove it down their throats.
Yeah.
And then they're gonna talk about it. Because I'm starting to see it in my, my children's circle of friends and, oh, maybe I'm pan. Maybe I'm this, maybe I'm that. And, and these kids, they don't know. They're so confused. And especially right now where they feel isolated and confused from just COVID. They're, they just want attention and they want to be loved. And this just confuses them even more.
Well, I mean, I think it is actually a way to, I mean, I think honestly, um, some kids use it as a way to stand out.
Yes.
You know, I mean, the shock value.
Especially with social media.
Yeah, I mean, so I think there's a real danger of it being used for that purpose.
Yeah.
And, um, gosh, yeah, I don't know. I mean, this whole thing, I, I.
So if this was brought to Ferndale, if this happened in Ferndale, and let's say, first grade, I don't think there should be any sex education, body parts, any of this in first grade, my, my personal opinion. And I know a lot of parents who agree. So if it came to Ferndale, as a, if you were elected to school board, what would be your reaction? What would you do?
What would be my reaction? Well, then you would have to go through the superintendent. If some, if a parent brought that concern to you, then you would have to take it to the superintendent because that would be a, an issue with a staff member.
Right.
And they would have to handle it. So that's, that's what you would do.
But you would help the parents in their concern.
Yeah, I'd say I would direct them to where they needed to, you know, and maybe even help them say, hey, you know, don't approach, like you said, with hostility, just with a concern.
Right, right, yeah. So can, let's get into uh, Critical Race Theory. Go ahead.
That being said, one thing I was kind of curious about was, okay, in this particular situation, um, this person uh, mentioned that they got it from their um, inclusivity library. So there is a library of materials apparently that can be used, that can be borrowed from, you know, in the, in the.
Is that in their public, or in their school library?
See, so that may be an area where, where the school board might actually be able to have some sort of, say, I don't know. Um, I know one of my friends uh, mentioned also, I mean, I know you're in the segue into the CRT thing, um, that her daughters had been exposed to that aspect, you know, a, a, a topic, you know, that, that they covered in a way. She wasn't happy about it. Um, and, uh, and the, the teacher that had used the book had said that she got it from their inclusivity library. And this was in Ferndale. So I'm getting the impression that, you know, all of these schools have a collection of books that they, they endorse as, you know, being useful for, you know, like you can come and use this book. Doesn't mean that a teacher has to use those materials. It just means they're available if the teacher wants to.
Well, what's interesting and might be worth finding out is, is that available to students? Well, what's interesting and might be worth finding out is is that available to students?
I don't know. That would be an interesting thing to find out.
Because it's one thing to teach something, um which I don't agree with still, but it's a whole nother thing. Um I guess without having seen the material, parents might think, well, I don't want my kid looking at this. You know, that's something that I as a parent might wanna walk them through, might again, might depending on the parent. That's their choice, though. It should be that parent's choice. And I really think that we should know what kind of sex education is in the school because when when the they were trying to pass all this, which. I actually want to ask you, you know, they passed a sex education bill, but everyone gets to vote on it. So all these people who may or may not have children have now voted where our children are being taught in school. I personally think it should have been left up to the school board to represent in that community. How do you feel about that?
I'd actually have to think about that. I mean, I you know, personally, I'd really rather sex ed, you know, went back to what it was when I was in high school.
You know, what do you think personally on on that? Do you think it should be? Something like this should be controlled more. For instance, if you're in Seattle, maybe ninety percent of the people wanna teach it that way. But maybe if you're in Yakima, they don't want to teach that way. So I feel like just like we have districts that represent us, well, then our school district might. Be able to represent how that that community feels.
I think that there may be some local control to a degree, like you said, that would re- you know, reflect more of the values of the community, you know.
Say Linden didn't wanna teach it and they could vote to not have that inclusivity library.
Or you know, yeah, maybe you maybe they are not required to have a library of materials. Or maybe they have more control over the materials that are in there. I mean, you know, that's the other aspect of it is it's like, is it a certain set of acceptable materials and everything else is. You know, forbidden or is it?
Or do they even?
Talk about teachers having, you know, a fair amount of autonomy in their own classrooms. Again, you know, yeah, I don't know that how much control you actually have over something that, you know, a teacher says or 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 does. Unless somebody voices a complaint. Um I was talking to a friend who told me about a teacher um. Uh who, because we were, I said, I asked her. As as she was a teacher, I asked her, I said, do you have to, do you have to deliver this content in your classes? She's an elementary teacher and I, you know, and she said. Well, yes, but teachers have quite a bit of latitude in how they're going to deliver it and so, you know. The more conservative ones will probably not, you know, be bringing books like that into the classroom. Um but she said there was another teacher who who. Asked, you know, let kids write questions on slips of paper and then she answered them. She took them all up and she opened and answered them and she said. And some of the questions were pretty outrageous. And yet this teacher just answered them like they were nothing and she said, I personally didn't think that that was appropriate.
What age or what grade do you know?
Uh I don't know. I know it was an elementary grade, but you know. Some of the questions were really much more adult content, let me put it that way. So I don't know, you know, it is a rough issue. So I kind of, I think my personal belief is that this aspect of school should be scaled way back to. You know, this is. These are the mechanics of it. And you know. There might even be resources available if they want to, you know, take them home to the parents and then, you know. Get more information on other things. Um far as issues of things like um transgenderism, I'm not denying that there are some people who may feel that way. But I think that probably would be better handled at the individual level between that kid and a counselor and his parents. I just, you know, kind of think some of those topics don't necessarily need to be.
Yeah, we don't need to be explored as children because again, it's it's an adult choice or it should be. Your sexuality should be an adult choice and like I've told my kids, you know, um. My ass, you know, if your if your friends aren't sexually active, most of them aren't, you know, eleven, twelve, thirteen, why are they making this choice? Why are they doing this if they're not, do they, are they, you know, well, we just. They might say, oh, they 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 love their their friend and it's, you know, the same sex or whatever, but do you love them like that or you just really care about them? I think kids are confused. I really do and no, I'm not saying that that I, you know, I'm not, I'm not. Blanketing that statement on every child, but I think we're creating this culture where kids are very much confused. When you see love is love, well, that means, oh, well, then like my mom and dad love each other. I love all my friends like that. You know, and I just, I think it's going to get very messy very fast. Give me a toddler spaghetti and. I just don't, I think kids are just gonna be confused and then they're gonna. Make excuses for bad choices and there's no account accountability for things really is the direction I see we're heading. All in the sake of being exclusive.
At the end of the day, does the school have to live with the consequences of what happens? And they don't, but the families do.
Right, and and again, in being inclusive to everyone is a lie. Because there is no way that kids who are straight can celebrate that.
You can, you can say, I respect, you know, your right to a different lifestyle, I respect, you know. Yeah, you should always respect others. You shouldn't bully people. You shouldn't do any of those horrible things. But but that's a lot different than saying that you have to openly embrace it and celebrate it. I mean, I don't really see anything. Honestly, to celebrate about a lifestyle choice. It's it's an individual decision and you know, it should be respected. You know, you if you, you know, if you stay in your lane and don't infringe on others, if you're not getting in somebody else's face, you know, and saying you have to do this or, you know.
Yeah, people of that community don't want you to fly if you're straight and it should go both ways. We should just respect each other, like you say. And we should never, never bully people because of how they've chosen to act or behave. Uh you never know why someone is in this situation or how how they've arrived at where they're at. And your your actions could make things worse for that person. So kids should always remember that.
Well, and the thing that also bothers me is they're acting on the assumption that you are intolerant. I mean, that's 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 the starting point. You are intolerant, so we have to teach you how to behave. It's like, well, no, I mean, you know. What I see as, you know, all of this inclusivity stuff could simply be handled by the golden rule. Treat other people as you expect to be treated. Treat other people as you would like to be treated. You know, that would handle a multitude of problems without, you know, ruffling anybody's feathers.
And everybody should just be proud of who they are.
You know, you are who you are, you're unique and. And be comfortable in your own skin, you know, teach kids to be comfortable in their own skin and just let everything else go. And I think this applies to to the racial stuff too. It's like, you know. Why would you be rude to somebody because of, you know. Their their skin color or, you know, their cultural background or I mean, what's the point? Why? But the attitude is that, well, if you are white, I mean, that seems to be that that that. That somehow or other it's ingrained in you that you can't help it that you're, um what's the word I'm looking for?
That you're prejudiced or racist.
Not even not even prejudiced or racist, but um oblivious. Oblivious to. That is built into you. You just simply don't recognize the problems that others may have or how they might perceive things and I mean, I think that really. Uh it just seems. Condescending. It's like, you know, you can't expect people to to be thinking individuals who. Who look at somebody else and say, well, that's a person too, and they're coming from a different place and they've had different experiences and, you know, and 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 um. Well, to to so you can't possibly understand, well, give me a chance.
Spending so much time telling people how to think and what they should think instead of letting them think for themselves.
Yeah, that 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 keeps people from growing. You'll learn through, you know, the interactions. Obviously, you don't want interactions that are are are, you know, inconsiderate or harmful. You know, and and there is the role of the school to step in if they see a conflict between students. But to guide, not, you know. But you know, those are learning processes too, you know, everybody has experienced negativity of some sort in their life. Everybody has experienced, you know, being called names or, you know. Excluded or i- i- it isn't, it isn't confined to, you know, simply.
Why you look.
The way you look or your sexual orientation or any of those things. I mean, everybody has some. Some negative experience in their lives and so, you know, if you just go for a more blanket approach of. You know, be kind to people, respect people's, you know, individuality.
Yeah, and circumstances build character and I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that people. Um if you're treated poorly, that that should have happened to you, but it it does teach you that not everything in life is, you know. Fair and it's not sunshine and rainbows all the time and life can stink. And and our kids need to learn that and we can't. Put this bubble around them all the time. They do have to learn what life is like and they have to learn how to act properly again. Gotta take take tiny humans and make them responsible adults. And and so I, but again, that is, that's the parent's job. The school is there to come along and teach literacy.
Literacy, exactly, and that should be the focus, literacy. And in fact, you know, if they focus. On providing the best possible education that they can, the best basic education that they can to everybody. Then those other problems will sort themselves out. I mean, that's treating people fairly, that's treating, you know.
Yeah, and even even offering, I you know, I think here are are offering things like STEM and things, life skills. More life skills and things that are the way the that our industries are trending, you know, I mean, offering. More focus on life skills and things that kids can do right out of high school and a little bit less time on telling us. You know, that we've are in it's in our DNA to be horrible humans is is ter- it's terrible.
Yeah, I know. But the other, I mean, why, I mean, this conversation could go on forever. I just, I yeah, and it probably will after this is over with. But um where was I going next? I'm sorry.
I'm curious on what you have on this piece of paper.
Oh, I I just printed this out because I figured you'd probably ask me questions about, you know, how many kids go to school in Ferndale and. Stuff like that. I mean, I did, this is, if you go to O S P I. They have a report card, you know, which puts together a bunch of information about.
So how does Ferndale stack against the other schools in Waukesha County?
Um I mean, it's about right in there in terms of uh their student performance, to be honest with you.
So you don't see any major holes or. Defects in the Ferndale school system, like there's no, are there any warning signs that were?
I mean, I, to me, this is education in general. I'm looking at it. I I haven't had a chance to go and compare to like, say, you know. I mean, I know that there are some schools, you know, within districts that do better than others. I know, uh you know, like if we were to look at Bellevue Schools, they probably have a little bit higher. Performance. So you know, and 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 people will tell you, well, that's because they spend more money. Well, okay, it's a richer school district. Yeah, they do. But they probably also have other other uh.
So so there it says student performance.
So proficiency, English, language arts, and this this is from two thousand nineteen because um data from two thousand one, you know, they didn't do testing.
But we 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 can pretty much assume it's.
I think everybody would agree that it's probably dropped off a little bit on account of, you know, the.
Because my kids did. Well, at least, okay, at least in Linden, I know we had to do them.
But you know, I don't think, Ashley, I don't think they're doing that across the board. Um I, you know, I'm pretty sure that I don't think Ferndale is. Don't quote me on that, but I don't think they are.
Because that's another, the reason I was like, hmm, I don't think I'm gonna send my kids back to school after seeing the subliminal things being put in star testing. Yes, I don't understand how math questions have anything to do with climate change.
Oh, I didn't see that. I'll have to, that's interesting to me because, okay, one of the one of the little side jobs I've done. Has been um for for probably twelve years. I didn't get, I didn't get hired to do it this year. It's a seasonal job. And I have to reapply and get hired every year, so. Um uh is um doing uh uh proficiency testing scoring. Scoring the extended response uh questions. Um on uh on the Texas Star, for example, I've done those, but I I think that's a different test than what you're talking about. Um and I've uh I actually kind of like the process that they go through. I know, I mean. I kind of don't like the whole idea of teaching to the test and all that kind of stuff. If you're if you're teaching content and, you know. Trying to get your kids to master the content, that should be good enough and then whatever shows up on the test is what shows up on the test, but. Obviously, you know, it kind of got turned around so that, you know, tests are leading the way as opposed to it's just a. Indicator and, you know, now, of course, people want to do better on the tests because of funding and things. So but.
Which is interesting. So my kids have scored higher this year than they ever have. They scored ninety percent higher than other kids in Washington State. And I'll guarantee you it's because they've been homeschooled.
Probably, I mean, you know, it it's it's you can focus on, it's, I mean. Logistically speaking, it has to be easier for you to focus on a handful of kids. And know where they are, what they're doing than if you have a classroom of thirty kids, you know, I mean, that is a tall order.
Not a job I would like.
No, it's not a job I would like either and you know, and um. Uh I'm in awe of teachers who can manage a classroom and keep everybody moving in a forward direction. You know, given. They are and you know, and so, you know, when they complain about teachers not being paid well, I'm thinking, well, some of them. Of the teachers in Ferndale get paid pretty well, honestly. Um uh but I know that, you know, nationwide. Certainly, there's a wide range of compensation and circumstances and whatnot. Um but Ferndale, I think pretty well, generally speaking. If the ones that have been there for a really long time, certainly making up over a hundred thousand a year. But there is a general um ignorance about that. Uh there's a myth that goes along with teacher salaries, which is that, you know, teachers are always poorly paid. They're always undercompensated. They're not. You know. It's not true. That's not true and you know, you have to go. District by district to and and I think Washington State as a whole, they're actually pretty well compensated. And so.
How do people know that? They go and look at the budget that's passed?
No, actually, um if you go to Kitsap Sun, look that up online, it has. Oh, hello plant, um it has um teacher salaries, administrator salaries, since you can look at, look and see. So because it's public, they're public employees and it's public record. But but I guess I guess where I was gonna say is, is, okay, so but but when you look at the breakdown of Ferndale. It says forty per forty seven percent. Is low income. And so when you have an issue like the bond. Or a levy that hits property taxes and raises them up considerably. And part of that is, you know, part of what's being sold is, well, we're not compensating our teachers enough when when the teachers make. At least the median salary and I mean, they make more than if this is how many, you know, the percentage of students is low income. I mean, that doesn't necessarily absolutely reflect the number of families in Ferndale that are low income or the number of households in Ferndale that are low income. But it does say that we have a considerable number of low income people. In Ferndale and so it's, there seems to be a disconnect between. The schools and the community in terms of, you know, asking for increases in property taxes to pay for things. Um and and I that.
Well, I I I even find it concerning that. Only half the kids are passing science, less than half are passing math and fifty eight are passing English. That, if I was a teacher. Percent is an F.
I know.
So that the Ferndale School District, it does have some work to do. Yeah, and and again, I don't know that that falls on the school board or if it falls on. Maybe the curriculum. But that I I would say, and I don't know where we are as far as a a whole of Waukesha County. But I think.
As I said, you know, and looking at and looking at other schools in Waukesha County, I pulled it up, I looked at it quickly and I didn't bring it with me as I spaced it. Uh I didn't see huge differences between, you know, Ferndale and and some of the other schools. They were all like right in the same ranges.
Which is sad for a public school system. How much money? I mean, I I don't know and I'm not asking you, but how much money is put in? From the federal government to our state every year?
Actually, Washington State receives um less in terms of federal funding in a lot of ways than than many other states. I think they said eight percent of their budget comes from federal funding. Eighty something percent, um you know, the majority from the state. Um uh local levies, I think they put at, I saw seven point four percent on the the thing that I was looking at earlier. Um, uh, local levies, I think they put at, I saw seven point four percent on the the thing that I was looking at earlier. Um, but I'm not sure if that's. This being a rather odd year, and with the levy issues, I don't know if they, you know. Underreported that, I I don't know for sure on that, but I know that, I know that the the majority of the funding comes from the state. You know, which is our taxes too, it just goes to this, you know, the big laundry machine in Olympia and then comes back to us.
But as a taxpayer, I find it concerning that half the kids are failing in the public school system.
Well, I mean, you think about how much it costs, okay, so Ferndale, according to this report, and and this would be their operating budget, that that they they. They they spend roughly, you know, a little over fourteen thousand per year per student. If you include, you know, the bond stuff, the capital um improvements, you know, the buildings and stuff, which. I don't know why you shouldn't include that, considering, you know, it's all school cost. Then it bumps up to about seventeen thousand per student, when you divide that out over the over the student body that they've got. So, I mean, it's a lot of money every year to be sinking into into education, you know.
That doesn't seem to be working.
I know. I mean, you know, I. That as a home, as home schooling families, what would you do if you had that amount of money per year per kid? The field trips you'd take, the enrichment, the, you know, the piano lessons, the, you know, all these things that you have to be creative about and do, you know. With no money or very little money. You know, then.
That's why I wish we had the choice here. And, you know, I think, given the choice in Washington State, we might not have schools as overcrowded. I definitely think that parents or homeschoolers should be held accountable to show where they've sent their money. Uh, definitely, and I mean, I have to report everything my kids are doing, you know, I mean, there, it's not just like, oh, it's. I kept them at home and we read books all day and then we were done.
And the, and you have to annually file and say, you know, I'm I'm. Gonna homeschool this year.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Requirements, obviously.
Yeah, but I I do think as a whole, the public school system with this report card. And what they're trying to bring on new, which it seems to be less fundamental teaching.
I absolutely agree with you on that, I mean, I think fundamentally, literacy is where it should be. And anything else, they spend money on anything else, it's an opportunity cost and it gets, you know, lost, that same money that's invested. In those other things could be better spent, you know, on on these fundamental responsibilities. Uh, I agree with you on that.
Right, so I I was at a meeting last night and somebody brought up, I don't know if they said intergenerational or interracial school. This is new, and it's on. So I don't know anything about either.
I would imagine intergenerational, I mean, their schools are interracial.
It's a new, it's a new thing, um, but it's here in Waukesha County, it's one school. Um, so that might be something for everyone who's listening. I don't know anything about it yet, I'm gonna look into it, so maybe, you know, maybe you can look into it and see. It's something new, so, but I guess on, I think on the O S P I website, it's there as I, they're, I guess, recognizing it as officially. A place to be educated, but it's quite different, so. Uh, yeah, something to look into.
I know, and I I I, you know, I feel like I should be a more informed person, especially if I'm going to run for an office, but as I said, I really wasn't planning on doing this. But nobody else, you know, wanted to do it, and. You need to put up a challenge at least to show that somebody's paying attention, and that, you know, and I figured this way, hey, I mean. It's a win-win, whether, you know, whether I actually get in there or not. Even if I don't, I've educated myself, I can take what I find and I can educate other people with it, and so, you know, it's not a wasted effort.
Well, I think you don't give yourself enough credit, because I think that you are. Reading, you're educating yourself on anything you don't know, you're trying to grow in your knowledge, and I would assume, I can ask you. You're willing to listen to ideas and people.
I mean, you have to, because, you know, otherwise, you're doing what is happening right now, and it doesn't work, in my opinion, which is. When you shut out those other voices, then you don't get a hear, you know, and and you can't, I mean. Everybody has the potential to produce a good useful idea. And if you don't listen, then you don't hear it, if you just shut them out because you assume that they're, you know. That they'll say something that you don't wanna hear, you might miss something useful.
We can always learn something. Right, so is there anything that you would tell as you're campaigning um to the residents of Ferndale, is there anything you wanna say, a message to them?
Uh, just a message of, you actually have more power than you think, if you get involved, if you pay attention. And particularly if you have kids in the school system, where, you know, it makes sense for you to go in and see what's going on there.
And why would people vote for you?
Why would people vote for me? Oh, heck, I don't know, I mean, I guess. Well, I mean, because, because I'd bring a slightly different point of view. That I think has been missing for a really long time, that has been underappreciated, and but that but that is actually in the community in a large part. Um, I I think people of a more rural character with more traditional values. Make up actually still a significant chunk of the population in Ferndale, and. I don't believe that there is a a voice that really represents that on the school board as it exists. And also, in addition to that, because the people who have been there have been there for so long, at least, at least two of them, the the, you know, well, three. At least three of them, so that three out of five have been there for a very long time, and it kinda steers the course of the board, I think, because, you know. You'll defer to the more experienced people who are familiar with the ropes, know what they're doing. Um, but, you know, they've been there since they hired this superintendent back when she first came on. And so they've had this time to build a relationship with the superintendent, which, um. It's good to have a good working relationship, but on the other hand, I think what maybe happens when you become really familiar with somebody, when you're um. Uh, you know, you've developed a certain camaraderie, could be that you lose objectivity. And I think that maybe it would be better to have a certain amount of of, you know. Objective distance. In a relationship like that, so that you could better, you know, assess. Those sorts of things, I I, these are like, you know, structural things that I think, you know, are. Are are problems with a system when it when it becomes entrenched.
Well, that's all great info, so if people wanna get ahold of you, what's the best way for them to contact you to ask you questions or just get to know you more?
Um, um, my phone number is three six zero nine two seven one one five four, although I would recommend sending a text. Instead of calling. Because otherwise, I'll just think it's spam and I'll ignore it, cause I get so much of that. Um, uh, also, uh, my campaign email address is Peggy U for schools at gmail dot com.
Okay, and that's four, isn't it, the number four, okay, perfect, thank you Peggy so much for coming on with us today. And just letting us pick your brain, it's been, it's been great, no, no, it's been great, it's awesome, and you're, I think, like you said, you represent. The people and you represent maybe a group of people who haven't been heard, so, thank you.